Gentlemen, it's 9:30, so it's showtime. This is the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing. It's Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, and I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroff.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, would you please do the honors of the invocation, pledge of allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
Dear God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to their republic, which stands one nation under one banner, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Mr. Rutter, tell us if we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions.
Good morning, Mayor. I'll actually ask Mr. Fisher to run us through those points. I believe we have a couple.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Under additions, the only item is there has been some additional correspondence received since the agenda was published. That's all at the dais for you.
That's it? Okay. Any postponements?
Yes, so we did receive a request from the applicant yesterday for Item 3B1 Brentwood of Wellington. I did send that email to you all yesterday, and then there is a copy of the postponement request letter at the dais.
All right, and since it's less than five days, we need to act upon that.
That's correct. You do need to vote on whether or not to postpone.
Okay, very good. All right, I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, seven to zero. All right, so let's move on to, I guess, the postponement first?
Yes, typically you would take up that item first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A proof of publication?
I am sorry. Thank you. I usually have Commissioner Bernard there to help me on that. Commissioner Bernard, I didn't hear you say... I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard for a motion to... Proof of publication. I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. That is approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much. We appreciate the guidance. All right, let's move on to postponement requests. We have a request to postpone 3E1. Do we have any discussion on that item? Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make the motion to postpone 3E1, the Brentwood project.
I have a motion by...
I'm sorry, 3B1.
I have a... Commissioner McKinley's... And I have a second by the Vice Mayor. I'm just going to make a comment on it, and then we'll have a vote on it. I'm really surprised that we're postponing this thing. We have had a lot of discussion about workforce housing and the need for it, and I know that this is maybe a heavy lift, but I'm just worried that we keep talking about workforce housing, and when it comes time to look at a project that looks to have an opportunity to deal with it, we get bogged down and...
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me address your concerns on that one. This particular property is located west of 441. It's tucked in between two single-family residential communities that are not opposed to development on that site. They are not opposed to workforce development or workforce housing being on that site. What they are concerned about is the precedent of doing multi-story, multifamily housing on the west side of 441. So they have offered to continue to work with the developer to see if they can come down from four stories to something more along the lines of two stories that would blend in better with the surrounding community. It's certainly not out of opposition to the development. It's the type of development.
I'm glad to hear that, and I certainly will be looking forward to seeing this project come back. All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone. All in favor, all opposed. This item is postponed. Do we have a date certain on that postponement, or is this just...
I believe in the request letter, it was a request to the next amendment round, so I would presume the August 31 comprehensive plan hearing.
Okay. All right, so then August 31st would be the postponement date, and it's been approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to public hearings. We are on 3A1.
Yes, and we'll begin with the presentation by the applicant.
Good morning. For the record, Jeff Brophy with WGI. I know everyone is familiar with this project, but since this is transmittal, I will have a very brief presentation to go through to bring everyone up to speed. This is the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage property, and this is near the intersection of Lyons and Atlantic. It is outlined in the yellow shown on the map here beside two other pieces of property that are part of this application as well. The Shop Del Ray, Fearing 2, property directly on the corner, and the five-acre Seneca 2 property, which is Plaza Del Ray, as it's known, just to the east of that. This is a large-scale amendment to go from AGR to CL. We are not asking for any text amendment. We are not asking for any increase in the commercial cap in the ag reserve for this property. Staff does recommend approval. This is how the properties sit today. On the corner, again, there's about 43,000 square feet of approved square footage. Seneca 2 has approximately 39,000, and the 10-acre site that we have... That we are bringing before you today is a preserved parcel for the Sussman PUD. The concept here is to transfer square footage from the two sites to the west onto the property that is being proposed today, therefore avoiding any cap to... Or any introduction of any increase to the square footage cap for the retail in the ag Just a little history on the site. This was the former airstrip, crop dusting airstrip for the ag reserve area, and right now, it actually has an action on it from the DEP. It's heavily contaminated, and the property owner is working with the DEP to clean that up. In regards to the 10-acre preserve that's currently on the property, we are transferring those preserves to two pieces of property just to the south that would be with a bona fide ag use on them. We meet traffic policy 3.5D, and important to the community and their support has been the FDOT access. As of right now, the two commercial properties on the corner can only access coming from the east by going to the intersection and making a U-turn movement. What this property will allow us to do is to allow for cross-access between all three properties because of the existing left-in on Atlantic, and we have confirmed with DOT that with the widening of Atlantic that that left-in will remain. Staff assessment has us in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and this is the proposed site plan that is currently going through the DRO process. Again, of importance to the community and the support of the Alliance, as well as Del Ray Lakes Estates to our east, has been the allowance for that cross-access and our agreement to keep everything at one story. Staff recommends approval. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. I don't see anybody racing to their buttons, so staff, do you want to follow up?
Sure. Scott Sorino with the Planning Division will provide a presentation.
Scott Sorino with the Planning Division. This item was previously postponed to the Board in February. This is a multi-part amendment request in the Agriculture Reserve tier for three parcels located on the southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue and Lyons Road. The Fearing site, shown in pink, and the Seneca site, shown in yellow, are two sites that received commercial future land use in 2016 and 2017. Sites are currently built with commercial uses and have unutilized square footage remaining. The first part of the amendment request is to reduce the allowable square footage of these sites through conditions of approval. This will allow the unutilized square footage to be assigned to Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage Site, which is requesting commercial without increasing the cap. The commercial cap is unique to the Agriculture Reserve tier and was established to ensure that commercial does not exceed local demand and thereby serve as a draw from outside the tier. By 2019, the current cap of 1,015,000 square feet has largely been reached with approvals within the tier. The following in 2020, provisions to commercial policies in the tier were adopted along with the West Boynton Center Amendment to exempt self-storage from the commercial cap and to allow commercially designated sites that meet the major intersection criteria in the ULDC to achieve higher floor area ratio. The Atlantic Commercial Site, shown in purple, is 9.89 acres, and applicant is requesting amendment from Agriculture Reserve to Commercial Low. The site is currently a preserved area for the Sussman PUD. The associated zoning application is proposing to relocate the preserved area and rezone to multiple-use plan development. The most recent site plan shows the applicant's intent to develop 10,200 square feet of retail, 3,119 square feet of car wash, and almost 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses. Subject site located at a commercial node at the Del Ray Marketplace at the northwest corner, two pre-existing commercial sites on the northeast corner. To the east is the Del Ray Lakes Estates, and to the south are various agriculture uses with Agriculture Reserve future land use. Staff's assessment is that the amendment is located adjacent to an existing commercial node and is consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan related to commercial location within the Agriculture Reserve tier. Specifically, the site is a quarter-mile from one of the two commercial mixed-use centers, which encourages the clustering of non-residential uses in the Agriculture Reserve tier. In addition, the amendment falls within the commercial cap established for the tier due to the release of square footage from the Seneca and Fearing site. During the public notification process, the Planning Division mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet and interested parties. Staff held an informational meeting on January 4th, 2022, and no members of the public attended. As of this morning, no correspondence has been received. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of this amendment. Planning Commission recommended approval with modifications and a 13-to-1 vote, modifying Condition 1 to a maximum of 100 square feet... 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses. Applicant agreed to the condition modification as included in Exhibit 1. The conditions include, for the Atlantic Commercial Site, to limit the maximum feet of this commercial and self-storage uses, require vehicular connectivity to the west, and require adoption concurrent with the zoning applications. And for the Seneca and Fearing Sites, the conditions will reduce the maximum square feet allowed on the site. Finally, the motion for the Board is to consider us to transmit, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. All right, we have one card. Let's take our public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Jim Knight.
Mr. Knight, you are recognized for three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I will not take three minutes, because it's going to be a long day. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and to everybody for the project... This development, the fact that it's going to have interconnectivity, which is a wonderful thing. There's a lot of discussion about traffic on Atlantic Avenue. She'll be able to go from parcel to parcel interior there, support the project. It has staff support, and hopefully we can move this forward today, and I am not the broker on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, for your brevity. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to transmit the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage Fearing 2, Seneca 2 with amendments. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That is approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 3A2.
So, sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lauren McClellan with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm on behalf of my clients, the Fina family. I'm presenting the West Atlantic Industrial Application. So the 10.11 acre site is located on the north side of Atlantic Avenue, west of State Road... Excuse me, north side of Atlantic Avenue, southeast of the West Del Ray Regional Park, which is west of State Road 7, and we're requesting a future land use amendment from Agriculture Reserve to industrial subject to conditions. The proposed conditions are the same ones that were imposed on the Sunflower Industrial and the LAS Farms Comprehensive Plan Amendments, previously adopted, that limited uses on the property to light industrial uses and specifically excluded heavy industrial uses that emit noise, smoke, light, dust, et cetera. So the first thing that I want to do is I want to go back in time a little bit and talk about the changed conditions in this area of the county. So in 1985, the county approved the Palm Beach Downs Residential Project. On this graphic, you can see the single-family pods in yellow, which were proposed to be developed at a density of one dwelling unit per acre. And then you can see the townhouse pods in orange, which were proposed to be developed at a density of three to five units per acre. Mr. and Mrs. Fina saw this plan and thought that it would be a great place to buy a piece of property. They put all their life savings, and they bought the property just south of the project, more or less at the project's entrance, and they decided that they wanted to build their home. So in 1995, they completed the construction of their home, and they moved into what they thought was going to be a rural equestrian community, but there are still more changes yet to come. In 1996, the county approved a chipping and mulching facility, which is known as Ameri Grove today. And then in 1998, Palm Beach Downs PUD was modified. There's the chipping and mulching facility, and then there's the modified Palm Beach Downs property. As you can see, the boundaries of this project changed, and now only single-family was going to be proposed in this project at a density of one dwelling unit per acre. And then the private landing strip that had been on the west side of the property right against the Locks Hatchie Wildlife Refuge had been removed. And then in 2000, the ag reserve master plan was adopted, seven years after the Finas purchased their property. Also in 2000, the South Florida Water Management District purchased the Palm Beach Downs community, and this land was stripped of its development rights. So what was once supposed to be a rural community was now preserved land with an equestrian training facility and a county regional park. In 2001, the post office was approved. In 2006, an FPNL substation was approved. And then most recently, in 2016, the Wawa Stop &amp; Shop Future Land Use Amendment was approved from ag reserve to commercial low. So in the 16 years since the adoption of the ag master plan, this area has continued to change. The chipping and mulching facility has continued to expand their operations, as evidenced by the increased height and number of piles on the property. There's also been a couple landscape services that have been approved... Oops, sorry. That have been approved and moved into the area between the FPNL substation and the chipping and mulching facility. So with all of these changes occurring in the area since 1993, when the property was purchased, my client's property was no longer part of an equestrian community, but rather the odd one out. So that leads me into my discussion regarding consistency with the surrounding uses. So the planning staff is going to show you this map, which depicts the surrounding area's preservation land. But don't be fooled, this is not fallow land that is merely being preserved for open space for regional water management or his agricultural production. The perception of the map is not the reality of the landscape of this area. When you look at all the uses I previously discussed, you'll see that this property is not an isolated parcel, rather a property that can be better incorporated into the fabric of what is developed in the area with the approval of this application. The other point made by staff is proximity to the Locks Hatchie Wildlife Refuge. This property is located 25 feet to the east of the refuge, but there are also other uses within close proximity of the refuge. The county's park is within 1,500 feet, and I want to point out that when the property was previously approved as Palm Beach Downs, this western edge of the development is where that private landing strip was. So now I'm going to look at the surrounding uses in more detail. So to the north and the west of my client's property is the West Del Ray Regional Park. This park contains several uses that are not deemed appropriate when located within proximity to residential development. These uses include remote-control boats, airplanes, cars, helicopters. The park is frequently the location for various tournaments and events, and as you can see from this clouded area enlarged, which shows 200 to 300 cars parked for such an event. And I mentioned this park has fields for remote-control vehicles. As you can see from these pictures, these are not remote-control toys. These are large, gas-powered, loud, mechanical objects. The top-left picture shows the tent set up for one of the many events held every weekend at this park. The lower picture... The lower-left picture shows a large, remote-controlled airplane. I don't know if you can see it or not, but it is named Havit, which is appropriate, as that's what it reeks on Mr. and Mrs. Fina when it flies overhead. So now I want to move to the south side of Atlantic. The Wawa and Surrounding Commercial was approved in 2016, as I previously mentioned. There are two landscape service companies further to the west of the existing post office, and an approved FPNL substation will eventually be developed immediately to the south of Mr. and Mrs. Fina's home site. So I want to zoom in and talk about the chipping and mulching facility that was approved in 1996. Every day, numerous trucks hauling materials back and forth to and from... To and from the intersection of State Road 7 to the facility's entrance. It's about 2,000 feet along Atlantic Avenue. And you can see from these pictures, the red arrows, you can see the trucks leaving the facility filled with processed debris and others waiting to offload and pick up the more materials. You can also see the top picture where the dust and smoke are being emitted. That dust and smoke looks like a heavy industrial use to me. So in contrast to the surrounding uses along the road, the proposed request would allow a light industrial use on the property, such as office warehouse, cold storage, and even research and development. And as legacy landowners in the Agriculture Reserve, Mr. and Mrs. Fina want to keep their property in the family to allow for the next generation to have the opportunities that they did not. The intent for the property, if approved, would be to house research and development and cold storage needed to support their son's beverage company. The property will also support other business owners in the area that do not want to drive 10 to 20 miles to the east outside of the ag reserve. Keeping business locations close to the workforce and residents they serve reduces the overall carbon footprint of the community. So in summary, we believe that the proposed change to industrial is suitable for the property, given the surrounding uses and the changes that have occurred since Mr. and Mrs. Fina purchased this property in 1993, before the approval of the ag reserve. I know that this is a hard decision because the property is located west of State Road 7, but I do want to reiterate that the significance of west of State Road 7 did not exist when the property was purchased. There was already a PUD approved out there. There was already several uses out of there. Roger and Karen did their due diligence. They were looking forward to the quiet life amongst others in a rural equestrian community. The fact is that they relied on the maps and the plan that existed at the time, and those have failed them, as evidenced by the changes that have occurred around them, which now render this property really not suitable for a single-family residential home. And if the surrounding area had been developed as originally approved, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. But the facts are, things did change, and the Fina's vision of rural lifestyle have disappeared because of the changes that occurred over the last 30 years. We respectfully request the Board's approval of this change to allow for a use that would better fit in with those surrounding the property. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any questions at this point. Staff, we are looking for your presentation, and obviously you feel that this needs to be denied, so we're interested to see why.
Okay, and Travis Goodson will be presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Travis Goodson with the Planning Division. So as presented, the request before you is a large-scale future land use amendment for a project known as West Atlantic Industrial Fina. The subject site is just over 10 acres in size, located on the north side of Atlantic Avenue, approximately one-half mile west of State Road 7, within the Agricultural Reserve. The application proposes a future land use designation change from Agriculture Reserve to industrial with an underlying agricultural reserve in order to develop light industrial uses. There is a zoning application in process that is requesting to rezone the subject site from Agriculture Reserve to light industrial. No specific use for the proposed development has been identified at this time. And so this slide shows the land uses in color with the subject site outlined in the red and white. The vast majority of parcels in the vicinity of the subject site have an Agriculture Reserve future land use designation. The southwest corner of State Road 7 and Atlantic Avenue has a commercial low with underlying AGR. There's also industrial parcels to the east of State Road 7 on the north and south sides of Atlantic Avenue. Those parcels predate the Agriculture Reserve plan. And there's also a parcel to the south on the... Fronting on State Road 7, just on the west side, that's the Sunflower property. That application came before this Board last year and was approved for industrial with an underlying AGR. So building on the future land use map, this graphic shows existing uses in the vicinity, including passive and agriculturally-based operations. You have the Palm Beach Downs, and then you have West Del Ray Park encompassing on the north and west side. To the south, Landscape Service and Nursery, the Ameri Grove Chipping and Mulching Facility, the US Post Office. You have the Stop &amp; Shop on that corner. And then further to the south are existing single-family homes in the Agriculture Reserve. The west... On the east side of State Road 7, those industrial parcels, and then the two PUDs, the Four Seasons and Dakota. So building on that, this site shows lands that have been committed to preservation, either through ownership by South Florida Water Management District or privately through the AGR-PUD Preserve Requirement process. And as is evident, the subject site is essentially surrounded by these preserved lands. And you have the Bridges Meisner Preserve to the north that encompasses the West Del Ray Park and Preserve for other PUDs to the south. So this is a zoomed-out aerial image. In this image, you can see the eastern boundary of the Locks Hatchie National Wildlife Refuge beginning just west of that diagonal canal. That boundary is roughly half-mile or so west of the western boundary of the subject site. So it demonstrates also the agricultural uses and preserve areas typical of the west side of State Road 7 and the ag reserve. Just another aerial image for perspective. You can see the active row crops on the northwest corner of State Road 7 and Atlantic, the West Del Ray Park, Palm Beach Downs Equestrian Center, Chipping and Mulching, the Landscape Service, and nurseries as well. So this is the intersection of State Road 7 and Atlantic, looking westbound towards the subject site's location. You have the commercial low site for the... It's called Stop &amp; Shop. It has that Wawa on the southwest corner, and the Tivoli Isles Preserve Parcel, which is in active row crop cultivation at the moment. Further down, Atlantic Avenue, again, looking west, subject site's on the right, and the Oaks PUD Preserve Parcel on the left. It's important to note that this segment of Atlantic Avenue west of State Road 7 is not designated by the transportation element of the comprehensive plan as an arterial roadway like State Road 7 is west of State Road 7, or like Atlantic Avenue is west of State Road 7, or east. Industrial within the Agriculture Reserve tier has been a predominant topic as of late, and to briefly recap on some history, there's no policies for industrial within the Agriculture Reserve. The consultants recommended some in the Agricultural Master Plan. The BCC did not occur at that time, and as a result, no policies have been added. There are, however... There are, however, 64 acres of industrial parcels that predate the master plan and the tier, and these lands occupy the north and south sides of Atlantic Avenue, east of State Road 7. Since 2016, there have been several future land use amendment requests for industrial-type development in the ag reserve. Most of these requests, the most recent of these were Sunflower and LAS Farms that came before this board last year. So in the absence of industrial policies, there's no policy guidance for staff to use to direct the size, location, minimum access, or appropriate uses for industrial within the ag reserve tier. If there is a zoning application to, whether it's concurrent or not, with the future land use amendment request, if it's seeking a rezoning to a straight zoning district such as light industrial or industrial general, it does not typically require a site plan or a specific use, as most of those industrial uses are permitted by right or a staff-level And so going in through staff's review, staff cannot conclude that the request for industrial is compatible. The site is surrounded by preserved parcels and agricultural uses in close proximity to the National Wildlife Refuge. So unlike commercial land use, there's no policy guidance in the plan for industrial designations in the ag reserve tier, and therefore no parameters, again, to direct the size, location, access, and uses. There's limited details about the end user of the site, and no site plan to supplement staff's review for proposed intensity, buffering, or other elements. This amendment would allow for up to, a potential for up to 198,000 square feet on this site, which is an increase over the, of over 132,000 square feet from present future land use designation. And then additionally, there's a county text amendment in process to establish the commerce future land use designation, and that was initiated in February by this board following the agricultural reserve workshops last fall. And that's to help establish policy guidance for future industrial requests within the tier. And that amendment is, that text amendment is, will be presented to this board later today for consideration of transmittal or possible changes. And so considering that, the industrial request on this site is premature, pending board direction on the commerce future land use. Should the board recommend approval, though? Staff recommends the request be subject to three conditions. The first two are proposed by the applicant, and the third is proposed by staff. And the first two, as Ms. McClan had indicated, are, they mimic the same conditions that were adopted with Sunflower and LAS Farms amendments that prohibit heavy industrial or the flammable hazardous materials, and it also will prohibit commercial uses as a principal use on this site, so as not to circumvent the commercial cap in the ag reserve tier. And then staff's condition is proposed in the land use amendment and the rezoning application that's in process be considered for adoption and approval by this board at the same public hearing. So if this is transmitted today, this will come back when the rezoning application has been certified for public hearing. During the public notification process, the Planning Division mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet, in addition to interested parties and HOAs in the vicinity, and included the Delray Alliance as well. This amendment item was also listed in the ag reserve interested parties email that was sent out on May 30. Staff held an informational meeting on March 29 about this, for this amendment, and no members of the public had attended. To date, staff has received one contact from the public, and that was a letter from legal counsel representing Thousand Friends of Florida and the Sierra Club Loxahatchee Group that was sent via email indicating their position on the subject application. And so based on staff's assessment of the request, staff is recommending denial. This application was heard before the Planning Commission earlier this month on April 8, and that resulted in an eight-to-one vote to recommend denial of the application. And accordingly, staff's suggested motion today is to deny transmittal. This will conclude staff's presentation, and I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I guess I have just one question for staff. I mean, this seems to be a perfect example of changed circumstances. Back in 1995, when this parcel was purchased, obviously there was a different contemplation for the way this was going to build out. And now, especially with the FPL station, a substation now targeted directly across the street with Sunflower, with the uses of that recreational tract behind them. Is staff more concerned with the issue of policy and wants to defer to this body to make a decision on policy? Or are you concerned that this is not in keeping with the character of this community as it's being built out now?
So a couple of points on that. Good question. So as it was mentioned later in the agenda, there'll be a discussion on the proposed commerce future land use designation. And because right now there is no policy guidance with respect to industrial, that's why staff did recommend denial with Sunflower, LAS Farms, similarly with this. And with the commerce, what we're proposing is to kind of limit the locations of where that light industrial commerce future land use would be appropriate. And we've limited it to the major corridor, State Road 7, and then east of State Road 7 for Boynton Beach and Atlantic. We just feel industrial this far west of the State Road 7 corridor is problematic. I also want to point out that should this be transmitted as part of the zoning application, it will require a subdivision variance, because the site does not meet the minimum engineering standard for access, given that a portion of Atlantic fronting the property is less than 80 feet in width. So that is another item that would need approval for this site.
Rather than denial, would you think maybe postponement is the way to go on this, rather and wait until the policy?
Certainly discretion of the board if you'd like to take that path.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so happy to agree with you. This is an area in flux. I have visited the area many times, and I have been to the home of the Finas, and they have a very difficult issue where they live. And it's true, which you said, Mayor, about they built their house in a beautiful area before all these other things occurred, especially AmeriGrow, which is a real issue for anybody living in that area. I absolutely agree to postpone. I have told the applicant to wait, postpone. We're not ready for this designation. Let's see what happens with the proposed commerce land designation before we move forward on a, on an area that is in flux. We are, we are just, this is not the time to approve or deny this application. I have tremendous feelings for, and I absolutely understand what the Finas are going through. The area of Atlantic Avenue west of 441 is an area that has not been defined yet in terms of land designation. The analysis by staff is right on, because it, we're just not ready yet to put anything there. It probably will happen after we approve or deny the land designation of commerce in this area. But to do it now, to come before the board and do it now, is premature. So I would absolutely agree with you, Mayor, on this, that it would be wise to postpone this, this application until such time as this board has had the opportunity to decide if we're going to have a light industrial land designation in that area. So I, this is my district. I know it. I've been to it. I like it. We need to make sure that it's done well, and I would propose, I would agree with you, Mayor, on postponing this application.
All right, we're going to hold that motion for a moment. Let's take some more comment from the dais, and then we're going to take public comment, and then we'll circle back. Commissioner Moreno?
Yes, quick question. Is there another residence on this road? Are they the only residents? When I look up, when I look up GIS on my phone, I do not see another single residence on this road.
Yeah, I believe you are correct, that this is the only residence.
So they're surrounded by commerce in some way, shape, or form?
There's a mixture, there are, to the south, southwest, there is a preserved parcel. To the north is the regional park. So there's a mixture of some, like AmeriGrow is on that corridor, and then there are some preserved parcels.
And just out of curiosity, has anybody, we also have a remote control park up at Dyer Park for those same type of remote control vehicles, airplanes, and stuff like that. And when we're at Dyer Park, because the first tee facility is up there, they are very loud. And I'm probably, should be saving my comments, but if we're going to postpone, I do want to comment. You know, they bought this parcel with the hope of quiet enjoyment in a residence, and that's not what they have. So we need to figure out a way to make it available to them to do the highest and best use on this land. So while I'm not in favor of postponement, because I think we should be moving this forward, my, my hope would be that we can come up with a solution, even if it's to condition the property with light industrial on it. But having a residence on there, they don't have their quiet enjoyment, and to set the, to say that this has to be residential, I think is a mistake. So that, those would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm a hard no on this one. You know, even on the commerce conversation that we're going to have in a few minutes, this wouldn't even qualify under that, because it's not located directly on that corridor that's under consideration. This is west of 441, half a mile west of 441 and State Road 7, and allowing industrial uses on that side of 441 won't just affect this particular parcel, it has the potential of affecting other parcels in the ag reserve on the west side of 441. We need to treat that side a little bit differently than we treat the east. I would suggest that Parks and Rec go and talk to the property owner about purchasing it and expanding the county park, but I don't think we should postpone. We do not have a formal motion that's been made or seconded, so I'm going to support and make a motion to deny the West Atlantic Industrial Fina Amendment.
I have a motion to deny by Commissioner McKinley. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. We'll continue our conversations. I see no more lights on, so let's go for public comment. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. We have about 30 minutes of public comment on this agenda item, and we'll start with on 3A2, Arlene Berry. And I'm very sorry that I got your name wrong yesterday.
Oh, that's okay.
And then we'll have Jim Knight following, and then Gail Lad.
Okay. From what I understand...
Can you just pull the microphones down?
Oh, right, right, okay. I understand that county staff have recommended denying this, as well as the Planning Commission, and I concurred with that. I'm with the Sierra Club, I'm with Thousand Friends of Florida. I believe in keeping anything west of 441 green and open, so we can do the best we can as far as having a viable community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Knight, you are recognized.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Knight. Would it be possible to put the staff aerial up that showed the uses surrounding here? Perfect, perfect, yes. So I've been a big advocate for the Landscape Services, and we've talked numerous times. A number of the Landscape Services are on 441. We've been trying to move them out of Heritage Farms. Sunflower came through, was approved there. You've got Grasshoppers, Baker Landscaping, AmeriGrow, and one single-family home out there. The proposed designation for the commerce does not, would not allow this to be utilized. It'd still be in the same situation today with a single-family home in the middle of everything else that's going on out there. I think this is a special situation and should require, you know, would appreciate some special consideration for it. I do believe that in past, and I know that there was some opposition to the Home Rich Parcel when that was rezoned some time ago, well, now it's serving, it's now handling services for the community. The garbage dispatch is there, which we all have garbage, and they pick up Zone 3 and Zone 4. And you also have Top Cut, which moved out of Heritage Farms. So I think that to just, to postpone it doesn't really move anything to take action on it, and I think this is a good location that could be for Landscape Services or light industrial. Maybe there's some restrictions or some kind of requirements you could put that it has to come back before the board. Because I know that most all the industrial projects out there, developments out there, none of them went to the .45 FAR. You just physically can't fit it, it doesn't happen. And I would appreciate your consideration. I do support this item, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. We have two commissioners who'd like to speak, I don't know, to you or just on point. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that a lot of those references are properties that are directly located with direct access onto State Road 7, and also to just let you know that those Landscape Services, some of them are still operating illegally within Heritage Farms, and we're having a hard time getting them removed. Just wanted to make sure that was reflected accurately on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to get some clarity, because it seems like a lot of the basis for the argument to approve this has to do with changed conditions. What year was the, were the development rights, well, I guess I should say, what year was what was supposed to be the development, what year did it go into preserve status, and what year did the park go in?
So I know the South Florida Water Management District acquired the park parcel in 2000, and I believe it was a preserve before then?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh. I know that the South Florida Water Management District, which owns the park parcel, acquired it in 2000, and I believe it was a preserve area prior to that.
Okay, and apparently there was some other portions that were supposed to be development that the property owner anticipated living amongst, you know, sort of a community of people. Is that where the park is now?
Correct, yeah. So there was a residential development approved in 1985 for where the park is now, and that's why you see a lot of the lakes that are there. They had kind of started some development, but then never went forward with it.
Okay. And so one of the major change in conditions occurred in 2000. Is that fair?
With the purchase of the...
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
To sort of follow up what Commissioner Kerner said, this is a very interesting area, because it was supposed to be developed as an equestrian area, residential, giving off of the Palm Beach Downs, which is still operational. And the Finas purchased their house as part of a development that was going to be developed by Steve Wolf, who also owns Sunshine Meadows, which will be a topic of discussion at another date. But this whole area, what the Finas bought in there, was supposed to be part of a beautiful equestrian area. And it is nice there, because the park is huge. It fronts, however, a, you know, a water management district, which is rather vulnerable and sensitive. So it has been abused by, I don't want to say abused, but let's say that the AmeriGrow Group put in a fertilizer industrial use, which has been very difficult for any residences to continue there. So it's, it's an area in flux. And as staff said, it is west of 441. So it's sort of, as they say, amongst many of the community organizations, this is God's country. This is an area that we don't want to put too much industrial, especially since our county parks is going to be expanding the West Delray Regional Park. That is onsite for expansion. And for also, not just expansion, but also for renovation, to put in area for the developmentally delayed groups of children and more camping. So I'd like to just see this area developed in light of how we're going to... I'd like to just see this area developed in light of how we're going to develop the whole 441. That's why I would like to have a postponement, so that we can look at it in terms of how staff is going to propose to us today, what we're going to do with 441. It's, we can do a lot with this area. I respect the Fenas and, and, but we just need to wait until we have a whole develop. Instead of doing piecemeal, we're like, it's like a thousand cuts. I didn't think of that. It was a beautiful, whoever said it. It's, we're killing this area by a thousand. Let's, let's give it a pause. And let's just develop the whole area with one, with one oversight and vision, which I think staff has, has done very well on. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kerner, let's move on with our public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next two speakers will be Sheila Calderon and Gail Ladd. And then we'll have Linda Smith will be the third speaker.
Okay, I'm Gail Ladd, and I've been here before, talking about the Ag Reserve, part of the Sierra Club Locksahatchee Group. It just seems like what, the comments I just listened to were very logical and just spot on. I think the problem is, is the thousand cuts. And I think that's what's happening to the Ag Reserve. And I think it just seems like, where is it ever going to stop? It needs to be, things, these things have happened before you all came on board, I know. And it's got to stop somewhere. Things have to be logical. Things have to be, yes, for the public, for sure. I feel bad for those people who bought way out there. But what do you do? I think Commissioner McKinley is so right. Maybe something else can be done to help these people. Because who'd want to live where there's all these things going on around them when they didn't buy when it was like that? But I really think there's got to be a stop somewhere. The Ag Reserve, I mean, it's beautiful. And I just think you need to go along with what staff, staff goes into a lot of trouble, not trouble, they go into a lot of work, and they deny, they are asking you to deny it. And I agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ladd.
Following Linda Smith, we'll have Sheila Calderon and...
Smith, you are on.
Thank you. Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. So you might ask, why am I here again? Laser focused on the Ag Reserve amendments. There are so many other things a volunteer citizen could be doing. And you're right, there's so much wrong in the world. You have to make choices. I can't fix Ukraine. I hope I can help preserve the Ag Reserve. It's a relatively small thing when compared to sea level rise. And oh, look, a sparkling can of water with a resealable cap. On this particular project, though, on this particular site, is a single-family residential home and ag storage, and is presently allowed up to 66,000 square feet of agricultural uses built. The proposed amendment would allow up to 198,000 square feet of light industrial uses over three times the square footage for the use that's not even currently allowed on the site. I have a single-family home. Should I be asking for three times the allowable development on my site? The applicant cites numerous changes recently, that the owner should have been here, maybe with me, maybe before I got here, protesting the previous cuts to the agricultural reserve. Then they would have what they actually thought they were buying into so many years ago. But I understand, we all get busy, and we've got other things to be volunteering and working on. But if these previous issues had all been denied in the past, developers would not be here, and I understand this owner may not be a developer, wasting our time on all of these amendments, and we would be able to be spending more time on other items. I wish I had a time machine, but I do not, in order to try to fix some of the problems from the past. I advocate for the preservation of the preserve in the original intention of the Ag Reserve, while balancing sustainable and smart land planning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your time.
Following Ms. Calderon, we'll have Roger Fina and Heidi Mahaffey.
Ms. Calderon, you are recognized.
Good morning. Sheila Calderon from Green Acres. That's the place I live. Anyhow, I'm here to advocate, as we have been constantly, for stopping and preserving, not stopping, preserving, but preserving the agricultural reserve for what it is. Just this week, I was nearby. Two times, I went through signs saying, welcome to the agricultural reserve. The second sign was backed with a GL Homes huge sign for 50 and over, starting at $900,000. The area that was cleared was immense, right on lions. It just doesn't seem to stop. Well, this industrial situation is not a good situation, and certainly is not in accordance with the Ag Reserve regulations as they were put in when we all voted for the bond, or those of us that were here that voted for the bond. I had just moved here when that bond came about, but with a little bit of explanation, I knew it was the right thing to vote for. And now, after all of these years, and the many times, as been mentioned before, of coming to the Commissioners and seeing piece by piece by piece, it being denied the original, the original proposal that was for the Ag Reserve. And I am certainly not in favor of this industrial situation. And I do hope that it will be recognized. And I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. We do appreciate your remarks.
Following Roger Fina, we'll have Heidi Mahaffey and Karen Fina.
Everybody's bringing up their reusable water, just to show us that they are, you know, and single use is going away.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for your time. My name is Nicholas Fina. I'm Roger Fina's son.
Bring the microphone up just a drop. Thank you.
So, you know, I'd like to start by reiterating a few facts. I've met with each of you individually, so, you know, it won't take up too much of your time. But, you know, my father purchased the property, it was nearly 30 years ago. He purchased into a development of which he had a homeowners association in place. It was meant to be an equestrian development, of which he intended to build a legacy home for my family. You know, there's some issues that haven't been addressed today, one of which, you know...
Commissioner Sachs is asking if you get a little closer to the microphone. She's having trouble hearing you.
You know, one of the issues that hasn't been brought to many people's attention today is the environmental issues and health, health issues out there. I mean, with, with the AmeriGrow site, you know, I can say and attest by growing up on that property, you know, it's, it's not a pretty place to live. You know, the debris, the burning of the debris, the piling of the debris. And, you know, at the end of the day, I understand everybody's position on, on it being west of 441, but with the commerce language that's in place, you know, if, if this isn't vast today, you know, they're, we're basically denied. We're really put in a tough position there. So, you know, what we're asking for is, you know, my sister and I have sat and talked and said, look, this isn't going to be a legacy home for our family. You know, we're not going to bring our kids here. We're not going to raise our families here. Environmentally, you know, the health concerns and the safety concerns that exist out there today just wouldn't allow for it. You know, my wife and my sister would not support raising our children on that, on that property. So we're forced to ask ourselves, what is the highest and best use of the property that we can offer? I mean, what can we do with it? You know, everybody's saying we're surrounded by agricultural, but when you look at the uses of what's surrounding us, I mean, when you look at AmeriGrow, I mean, that's heavy industrial. That's, you know, I mean, the piles of debris that are being, you know, stacked up and burned over there, you know, it's, I know we're talking about a compliance issue, but the reality of it is, you know, those are the, those, that, those are the facts that we're up against. You know, I mean, that, that's what we have to face on a daily basis. You know, the safety concerns, Easter weekend, there was a murder right there next to the house. You know, I mean, there's, there's dormitories for the horse, you know, the horse track that's there, of which is not, you know, drugs are a huge issue. It's, it's never been a safe place. But I mean, that's 30 feet from the property line. So, you know, with that being said, I understand that what's been recommended is postponement, but the reality of it is, even if the commerce language, you know, comes into play, this is, you know, precluded because it's west of 441. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I ask that, you know, the Commissioners consider, you know, the circumstances that we're up against, and, you know, really just, just put yourself in our position. What, what are we supposed to do here? You know, I have a business here in Palm Beach County, of which I would happily move to this property. Again, that would take the designation of the industrial. But with that being said, you know, we're thinking about our family, we're thinking about, you know, what's to come. You know, I really don't think that, based on what staff has proposed, you know, we're, we're far out of line. We're talking about...
I need to cut you off. I've given you about another 20 seconds. So we appreciate what you said, and we certainly are all cognizant of the, the situation your family is in at this point. Ramsey, the, the situation with respect to code compliance and the, the use that is obviously creating a problem for anybody who wants to live on that site residentially, are these situations that need to be resolved by code compliance?
Yes. So actually, I went to the site maybe a month ago and drove all around there with Mr. Fina, and identified quite a lot of sites that were out of compliance. The workforce housing, not the work, the farmworker housing, there was actually a murder that happened there. We were investigating that. We were trying to straighten that out. There was a lot of abandoned junk vehicles there. The land, opened up code cases on the landscape companies there. Some of them seemed out of compliance. And AmeriGrow, I actually have meeting with their attorney on Friday onsite to go through the issues that are still existing there. Fire's been there to make sure that it's got fire issues taken care of, first and foremost. But there are issues, and there are compliance issues. So we will address them as best we can, but there are issues. The same with the trotting center. You know, it's ag, but there's some ag use, there's some uses that aren't necessarily ag. Junk, junked out RVs and trailers are not necessarily ag. So we will be taking care of a lot of those things to the greatest extent possible.
Very good. Thank you.
Following Ms. Mahaffey, we'll have Karen Fina, and then Drew Martin.
Good morning. Heidi Mahaffey, on behalf of 1,000 Friends of Florida and Sierra Club. While it's a human element to have empathy for a particular landowner or applicant, this county, this county commission's civic duty is to have a responsibility for the county as a whole, for the agricultural reserve as a whole, and what the land regulations are as they are today. The Ag Reserve was recently nationally applauded for its regulatory processes that have contributed to the preservation of ecologically sensitive areas, and also preserve that buffer in between the uses by the citizens and the Locksahatchee National Reserve, which is a great economic benefit to the county and also to the environment as a whole. This particular application, and it must be noted that there are code enforcement violations on this site as well. It's 10 acres. There is a residential home, but they're also using it for agricultural storage. They're not precluded from selling their property, but they're asking to be allowed to go outside what the law allows today to get a better price for it. And again, that empathy is there, but let's look at what this would do to the agricultural reserve as a whole. There has been a very strong line in the sand that has wavered recently as to allowing these industrial uses west of State Road 7. And I thank Commissioner McKinley for pointing it out, that you need to treat this area differently. Once we lose our environmental resources, we can never get them back. And that's what this commission is here to do today, is to make sure that we focus on the agricultural reserve, on the integrity that was the original intent that was supported by the public here before you today, and supported by the bond. Now, this particular applicant has stated in its justification that the area is changing into a suburban community. That's the very antithesis of what the Ag Reserve is meant to be. We're not meant to be a suburban community. That's why there is a suburban and urban tier to facilitate those particular needs. And the agricultural reserve is only supposed to be utilized for the needs of the community and the farm residential, the farming community as well. It's important to note that prior applicants have been taking this, this method of asking for these particular exemptions for their parcels. But those exemptions are being utilized as precedent to continue this expansion of industrial uses west of State Road 7. That needs to be stopped today. Staff has noted that the applicant did not adequately justify the request, that the county staff is unable to determine if the proposed amendment would further the county directions, including respecting the characters of the area, aiding the management growth in the tier, or contributing to the support or enhancement of agriculture. County staff also stated that the introduction of industrial future land use on this parcel would contribute to incompatibilities with the surrounding agricultural land uses and agricultural preservation intended for the tier. There's been a lot of discussion about how these agricultural uses are seeming like heavy industrial. But this county has decided what is an appropriate agricultural use and what is not in the Ag Reserve tier. While there may be code enforcement issues, those will be dealt with with county code enforcement, what we need to focus on today is, is this a project that's going to further the county as a whole in relation to the agricultural reserve, or will it only benefit the landowner?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Angela Fina. I have lived at 10641 West Atlantic Avenue for the majority of my life. I have seen the most drastic and unfair changes I have ever witnessed in my life. Thirty-some years ago, my father purchased this property with dreams of it becoming, you know, clean roads, beautiful entryways, security, but most of all, community. Today, our only neighbors, which I will not downplay, are a crack house, an illegal dump or mulch plant that is completely out of compliance, and a conservation easement home to dead bodies, unwanted animals, because it sits at a perfect dead end, where people can drop off their unwanted animals or dead bodies with, with getting away with it. Nobody will find out. Nobody will notice. Just us. I'm terrified for the health and safety of my family living here. I refuse to bring my one-year-old son there. With complaints of dizziness, migraines, runny nose, coughing, et cetera, I decided to get an air quality test done. The results were undeniable. High mold count, our roof, our cars, our trees are filled with a black film on it. This property is no place for a home. I know you guys want to postpone, but that's every day, every one single day making a difference, that my family's still living there. Our whole lives has been postponed, with South Florida Water Management buying us out, not buying us out. Please, consider giving us these permits for this new vision, this more appropriate vision of this property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Following Mr. Martin, we'll have Nicholas Fina and Angela Fina.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Locksahatchee Group and the Sierra Club. And, you know, this kind of seems like a show of, you know, let's make a wish, or, you know, I really used to be a show where people would get up and say, oh, you know, I have the worst life, you know, do me a favor. I think they used to have Queen for a day or something. That was like 50 years ago. But the thing is, that everybody could come to the county and say, gee, you know, I'm unhappy with where I live. It's not perfect. But the point is that those, this family could sell this property without getting any zoning change, and they would probably get a pretty good price. They're not trapped. They don't have to keep living there. Also, why should, if the county's not enforcing code compliance, why would that be an excuse to grant a zoning and, and use change to a piece of property? You look at the picture, you can see, all around this property is, is green space. So, I mean, I don't think this is really, I mean, if, if you can't preserve this property, which is clearly near the Locksahatchee Wildlife Refuge, clearly should not be industrial, the, the arguments they make, well, we argued that not to allow a lot of those uses too. We, we've argued not to open that up. But in order, you know, a lot of people came back and said, well, it's agricultural. We want to do this. We want to mulch. We want to do that. So we, you know, we, we were compromising. We basically made compromises to preserve the Ag Reserve by allowing those uses. And now you're going to come back, and these property owners are going to say, well, because you made compromises to allow those uses to promote agriculture, now that should be an excuse for you to change this property. You can clearly say... You can clearly say, see, that this is near the Loxahatchee Refuge, it's near wildlife, and it can and should be preserved as something agricultural. If a particular family does not want, or is no longer comfortable living there, if you make this exception, which you've made in other cases, we saw last week, you made an exception again on State Road 7, what you do is you open the door to the, every other property. Because everybody there, if they can get a rezoning and a land use change, they increase the value of their property exponentially. But at the same time, they are destroying the quality of life for everyone else. And there are a lot of nice areas not that far from this where people are living and they do not want to see additional traffic. By the way, this is not a road that could be used for industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Following Angela Fina, we'll have Nicholas Fina, and then the final speaker on this item will be Martha Hutado.
Hi, my name is Karen Fina. My daughter went earlier because she had to bring her son. Um, I live at 10321 Atlantic Avenue. When we first purchased the property to build our home, I thought it was going to be amazing, and for a while it was. It was a lot of hard work, but we kept looking towards our goal, which kept us persevering. Unfortunately, with what's going on around us today, we feel that it's not healthy or safe to have our residents here any longer. When we first moved here, there was only one house, Palm Beach Downs Training Center, and a 400-acre development with roads, cul-de-sac, guard gate, waterfall, and home sites already put in place for an equestrian community. We purchased 10 acres, thinking that we would have a great neighborhood. We purchased the property prior to 1998. As time went on, they traded the development rights to build Meisner Golf and Country Club on Lyons Road, which dissolved our neighborhood and decreased our property value tremendously. They also told us, we are now in the ag reserve. At that time, they drew the line in the sand at 441. Shortly after all that, South Florida Water Management came in and told us they needed to buy our property, which left, left us in a state of uncertainty, which lasted for years. So we were reluctant to finish our house the way we planned. We had built our home and horse stables with the intention of having our horses on our property and someday passing it down to our children. Fast forward to today, between the traffic and noise of the park, the many incidents which question our safety and the pollution of the ongoing heavy industrial site of Amerigo, it has made us more of an undesirable, unhealthy, and unsafe place to live and to fill our, fulfill our dream. We gave up our horses because they always had skin and respiratory problems. We had seven dogs that had skin and respiratory problems and cancer tumors that all the vets say that it was most likely caused by the environment. I have continuous upper respiratory infections and a constant runny nose. We have had the air tested and it's bad, a lot of mold and toxins, so much my daughter moved back because, moved out of there because she didn't want her newborn to get sick. As a matter of fact, my children don't even want the grandchildren to come visit us anymore. We get all the dust, mold, bad air, and stench because it blows right on our property. We have to pressure wash our roof and patio and walls and windows to the house at least every two months. Our trees and leaves are black from the dust, soot, mold, or whatever is blowing in the air. It is totally disgusting and not healthy. There have been at least 20 dogs that we have had to foster and find homes for that are dropped off at the end of the street, along with the murders, man hunts, suicide, gunshots on a regular basis, drag races and loud music in the middle of the night, drones that are always flying above our property, which make it invasive, scary, and unsafe to continue to live there. I feel that the light industrial we are proposing is exactly what is needed for the area. Also, it may allow us to be able to still pass something down to our children. In a way, I feel as though having our neighborhood stripped away from us, which devalued our property tremendously, not being able to do what we wanted to the house because of South Florida Water Management, building our home before the ag reserve went into effect, it would only be fair to allow us to finally do something that would be beneficial and least amount of impact on the area. People say that, um, they, I, I invite anybody out, I will host you for a week, and let's see if you have any symptoms.
Ms. Fina, I'm going to have to-
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I got a few cards. They said that they wouldn't be read in because these people aren't here. I'd really appreciate it if they could be read in.
We will take those and we'll, we'll put them in the record.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't do me any good, because, I mean, there's some, there's some stuff here, there's like five cards.
Can you summarize what's in the cards? I'll give you an extra 15, 20 seconds to summarize those.
Let's talk about the uses out there. I think that's, I think it's important. So, um, there's a Wawa, and then you have a, a post office, um, you have a strip center, then you have the heavy industrial site, you have landscape services, FPNL will be building a substation. That one green area across the street from my house, that's a fill pit. People dump fill there and then they, they take it away. The park was supposed to be a conservation easement, okay? There's three racetracks. There's a dirt racetrack for dirt bikes, an area for drones, there's a full-blown airport out there. They use it as a driving school, the county sheriff's department, you got to teach the sheriffs how to turn the siren on, right? What better place? On Sunday afternoon, they got the boombox parties. There's drag racing in front of our house on Atlantic Avenue. The conservation easement next to us, which is the racetrack, is used as a, a auto storage. Then they, they also use it as a sludge disposal area. I got all this on my iPad, if you ever want to look at it. The dormitory, which, I'm sorry, my daughter referred to it as a crack house, but the reason we do that is because they smoke crack there, and it's cracked right down the center of it. So when it rains, and they got kids living there, too. It's not just a dormitory for the... It, it's a mess, okay? We didn't buy into a mess, we bought into a community. We bought before 1998. These people can stand up and say anything they want. The fact is, before 1998, there was no line in the sand. There was no ag reserve. I would really appreciate you reconsidering. Us postponing this, um, doesn't, doesn't do anybody any good. We're just going to be back in front of you again. And we would agree to any language that you come up to with this new commerce. If there's anything in there that's, that's not in what we're proposing today, we will agree to that. So what else is there to wait for? If we would agree to everything that's going to come up in commerce, why wouldn't you put this through today? The postponement doesn't make any sense. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you very much, and we certainly hear the issues that you are bringing forward. We will, uh, would you give it to the clerk and, uh, we will receive and file those?
Thank you. Did Angela Fina have an opportunity to speak yet?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so our, our final speaker, unless I missed anybody, is Martha Hutado.
No, she's not speaking. I think there's a comment on there.
Uh, okay, we are not talking about a big corporation that wants to build a hun, a thousand homes, we're talking about a family that did nothing wrong but are being punished. I know the politics make it hard, but this is not a political issue, this is a right or wrong issue. I pray that you will do the right thing for this family.
Okay, we have heard from the public, we have in front of us a recommendation from staff that we deny this, and we have a motion before us to deny this. Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments of everybody involved in this. I'm certainly sympathetic to the perspectives and experiences of, of the property owners. Um, just one quick question, then I'll weigh in on, on where I'm at, on, on this issue. Was there ever an attempt by the applicant with the staff to negotiate a preserve area whatsoever?
As part of the application?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Um, what, and then the follow-up to that is, what can be used, or what can the property be utilized for under its current land use?
Uh, so there's, other than the, you know, usual agricultural uses, including nursery, there's also auction, farmer's market, produce stand, a commercial kennel, vet clinic, assembly nonprofit, daycare center, place of worship, government services, school. Um, obviously, there are different approval levels, so some of these may require an approval by the Board of County Commissioners, and there could also be, um, other access requirements too for these uses. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mayor, it may be, it may appear to me that the applicant's agent wanted to make a comment in response.
Yeah, you had asked the question if this had ever been tried to be incorporated into a preserve parcel. So my client, um, was under contract for five years with South Florida Water Management District to buy his property. However, South Florida Water Management District reneged and decided not to purchase his property because he had already constructed his house on the property.
Um, what's the relevance to the lack of preserve requirement, or?
Because you had asked if it had ever been incorporated in the preserve, and if South Florida Water Management District had purchased it, then it would have been incorporated into the preserve that is surrounding it.
My question pertained to, as you're negotiating or working with staff, was it, was there a proactive effort to say, hey, we recognize the, the sensitive nature of the ag reserve, let's have a preserve requirement proactively put into this? Did that occur? All right, so, um, you know, I'm very sympathetic and I appreciate the comments of the family. And what, what I, as, what I glean as I sit up here is that it's been a horrendous experience for this family dating back to, I, I guess, right around the time that they bought it, um, and, and that the changed conditions made it very difficult for them to enjoy their property for the last, I think, 30 years, um, at least starting in 2000, when it became evident that there was not going to be other neighbors in this community. Uh, and then the, the experience becomes horrific over the years, um, but then we're here today, asking for 200,000 square feet of, uh, industrial space, which I, I can't imagine there's anything more intense that could even be contemplated. I haven't seen any efforts at, at finding a compromise to bring these parties together. I'm reminded that we have members of the Pioneer Road Neighborhood, and Brett Gelsimino here, who led the effort to find a compromise during the Pioneer overlay, and it, and that worked. But what we have here is an applicant saying that we do not want to postpone, and we want to maximize every square foot of this property. And by the way, even though it's been unsafe and uninhabitable, uh, we still thought it was in our better interest to move forward in years of applications to the county to change the land use rather than getting out from under the property. And unfortunately, I have to consider the credibility of, of those statements as we sit up here and examine the evidence and the statements made to us. And so, um, there's been very little focus on applicant as to why this is the best use and why this use is appropriate. I believe them when they say they don't want to live there and it's unsafe and every experience they have. I don't mean to discount that, but there's been no analysis going beyond that as to why this amendment is appropriate. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. I had wanted postponement because I think that this is an area that's in flux, um, and I've been working with Ramsey, I've been working with many of the, there, it's, this is an area that we really need to work on with regard to staff's analysis of changing land designations, but if the applicant does not want a postponement, uh, then I will, I will vote for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. All right, we have before us a motion to deny. I'm going to call for a roll call since we appear to be split. So, would the, please, the yes would be to deny.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
I was in favor of postponement, but if we're not going to postpone, then I will deny yes, would be my answer.
There you go. Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
No.
All right, so we have a vote of six to one to deny. All right, thank you, everybody. I mean, clearly, I think the, there's answers to this problem, and hopefully, perhaps as Commissioner McKinley said, we could acquire this as recreational and acquire this as part of that park that's north of it, but we're going to have to work through a, a solution. I hope that will happen. All right, um, it's 11 o'clock, I'm going to take a five-minute break, give everybody a chance to, uh, take a breather. We'll come back at 11 o'clock. And we are moving on to item 3B2. I'm sorry? Okay. That's all right. I, if I'm wrong, you let me know. I usually have Mac over here helping me out.
Hey, how are you?
Okay, who's making a presentation on Village of Windsor Southeast Residential?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Villages of Windsor, um, comp plan request. Uh, so, just to orient you to the property location, it's located at the southeast corner of Hypoluxo Road and Lyons Road. It's 11, 8, 11.8 acres in size. We are requesting a comp plan amendment to change the future land use from CLR2 to HR8. Staff has recommended approval with conditions, and the planning commission recommended approval with conditions. So, the location, I think, is strategic to this request. This is an aerial showing the surrounding land uses. You can see both on the northeast and the northwest corners has a multiple land use category, um, which allows both commercial and residential mixed-use projects, and the commercial designation is commercial high with underlying residential. To the west of us is an HR8 land use category. The HR8 was approved to allow for a CLR. To the south of us and southwest is LR2, to the east is LR2, and then east of that is a proposed county park as well as a fire station. When you look at what exists on this corner, this is one of the last hard corners available for development in Palm Beach County. To the north of us is a public-sanced shopping center with, um, inline retail and, um, bank facilities. You also have townhouses. To the northwest is, um, a mixed use of, uh, inline retail, a restaurant with a drive-thru, a three-story multifamily building with 194 units approved, and then two-story townhomes. To the west of us is a three-story congregate living facility. It's approved for over 400,000 square feet. The height on that is about 38 feet. So if you look at the intersection, it's an intensive mixed-use intersection. To the south of us is single-family homes, Valencia shores, and to the east of us is undeveloped property. If you look at our site, and then you take the same, that same area, and you relocate it to the northwest corner, the northwest corner within that same area is a three-story multifamily and commercial. We are simply requesting residential on our site, and actually, we're proposing less units than what's already approved at the corner. In the staff report, you'll see that they focus on why this location is appropriate. Page E5 of the staff report says that development of the site at a higher density would be consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan to focus urban development at appropriate locations within the urban suburban tier. This is within that, the urban suburban tier, which is where we want to put density and intensity. So let's look at compatibility. The definition of compatibility doesn't mean that things have to be exactly the same. To be compatible, it is not necessary that two uses have the exact same function or the exact same intensity. Rather, compatibility is obtained when you- exact same function or the exact same intensity. Rather, compatibility is obtained when uses do not adversely affect each other. Further, two uses can function, or whose function or intensity are different, can complement and support each other. I'm going to show you a copy of the current approval for the site. This is a, what has been approved, a 290-bed, three-story congregate living facility. These are the elevations that were prepared. I've mentioned that this project was ready-to-go, zoned, site plan engineered, construction drawings prepared, ready to submit for building permit. And then COVID hit and really changed the CLF market. It no longer became an appropriate site for a congregate living facility. In fact, the congregate living facility to the west of the property is at about 65% occupancy. So as we looked at the options for redevelopment of this hard corner, the multifamily product seemed most appropriate, especially with the housing issues that Palm Beach County is facing, not only a need for housing, but also a need for workforce housing. Staff is recommending approval of the HR8, subject to conditions of approval. The first condition is limiting the project to 187 units. With a land use of HR8, we could actually do 207 units on the project. Item, condition number two requires us to purchase the 36 TDR units, and we have agreed to that. The zoning, it also requires of our total dwelling units, 25% are required to be workforce housing. So at the 187-unit number, that's 47 workforce housing units. Within the southernmost 350 feet, we're required to limit those structures to three stories. And within the southernmost 150 feet, we're required to limit that to landscaping, open space, wet and dry retention. We are proposing a companion zoning application to, to be approved at the same time that a land use would be adopted. This is what the conditions of approval that staff is proposing. You can see within 150 feet of our south property line, that will only hold parking, retention, and buffer area. Within the southernmost 350 feet, that area is limited to three-story buildings. They put this condition on the project because we do have a companion zoning application in the system that we are proposing one four-story building. The site plan is not what's before the board today. It's strictly a land use request, but I just wanted to mention that. Compatibility. In order to ensure compatibility, staff has proposed those additional conditions of approval that require separation and limit the height of buildings along the southern portion of the property. I was asked, are there any apartments approved west of the Turnpike that are higher, greater than three-story? This board did actually approve Uptown Boca. That is a very successful multifamily project. Actually, I've heard this board mention it in the past. That actually has four- and five-story product, and it is west of the Turnpike. There are other areas in Palm Beach County that have four-story buildings, four-story multifamily. The county is, the multifamily industry is trending towards more of a mid-rise product. One of the benefits of a four-story product is it requires an elevator. If you've been up along Donald Ross Road, there's the Alton Project that is a very attractive four-story product. So although maybe in the past that has not been the trend, it is trending more and more to four-story products. As far as schedule goes, we started working, we made our first submittal in November of 2021. We submitted a zoning application in December. At the Planning Commission, there were a couple of comments that the project was being fast-tracked. We are following the normal county process for land use approvals. We have had a long-time working relationship with Valencia Shores, which is the homeowner to the, the Property Owners Association to the south of the site. We immediately set up a meeting. It was kind of at the end of in-person, whether people were doing in-person meetings or Zoom meetings. So our first meeting was Valencia, was a Zoom meeting, and then we had two in-person meetings. We'll continue to work with the community. I know that in the past, it's been the direction of Cobra that we meet with the most directly affected communities first. Ultimately, we will go to growth management with our application, and we will most likely, if the board does support the transmittal, we would be back before this board sometime in August, September. Workforce housing. I don't have to tell you how important the workforce housing aspect is to projects coming before this board, but just to, this is a chart. It demonstrates with the HR8 land use, we would be permitted 207 residential units. Our application was submitted. We developed the best application, the best site plan that we could come up with at the time, and based on industry trends and came up with a unit count of 187 units. So we've already reduced the number of units on the, for the project. We did some research. On the county website, they've identified that the number of rental projects approved with workforce housing in Palm Beach County is 981 units. With this project, we would add 47 workforce housing units. So we would push that number over the 1,000 mark, and actually, that's about 5% of what's been approved to date. These are just some of the articles, again, emphasizing the need for housing in general, not just workforce, but just the housing crisis that we're facing. And just in conclusion, you know, what we're providing is 47 units that will be set aside for the essential workers. We have a fire station within, right down the street. We have a park right down the street. We are also providing housing for young professionals that are entering the marketplace, as well as retirees on a fixed income looking for an alternative to a CLF. In conclusion, within, this property is located within the urban suburban tier, where there already services exist. This is one of the last major intersections available for development. There are shopping opportunities across the street. There's a future park within walking distance. There are jobs, employment opportunities. It's an infill parcel. Rents are continuing to escalate, and we have committed to providing 25% of the total project, 47 units, as workforce housing units. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. We appreciate that. Okay, staff?
All right.
And Ina Stevcek with the Planning Division will be presenting this item.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Ina Stevcek, Planner 2 with Planning Division. Today, item in front of you, Villages of Windsor Large-Scale Land Use Amendment. Okay. It's a little bit shy of 12 acres. Currently, it has congregate living residential land use with underlying two units, and it's, the proposal in front of you is to change it to high residential with eight units per acre. The site was subject to a prior future land use amendment in 2019. We changed it from low residential, two units per acre, to the current CLR. It's a part of a larger Villages of Windsor PUD, shown yellow on your map. The applicant is also requesting additional density bonuses through the workforce housing and Transfer of Development Rights programs for the total of 187 units, and overall density of 15.8 units per acre. This is the subject site. The site is located in the urban suburban tier at Lyons Road and Hypoluxo Road intersection just west of Florida Turnpike. There are two 40-acre sites with multiple land use, future land use designation, just north of Hypoluxo Road. And there is a built congregate living facility with HR8 land use, future land use to the west. This built 410-bed CLF and 100-bed nursing facility is also part of Villages of Windsor PUD. The 40-acre MLU development on the northwest corner of this intersection, it's Windsor Place MXPD, was recently subject to future land use, future land use atlas amendment that changed underlying land use from 2 to 5, and it was approved for 400 units with an overall density of 10 units per acre and approximately 45,000 commercial. So the MLU to the, on the northeast corner, it's developed with 132 townhomes with an overall density of 3.3 units per acre, and it has over 100,000 square feet of commercial uses. The areas surrounding this node to the northeast, south, and west are predominantly single-family, low-residential, developed with planned residential communities. Yeah. Request overview. Currently, the site has a congregate living residential with underlying two, and it was approved for up to 347 beds congregate living facilities. This 347 beds is calculated based on 12 units per acre in the adopting ordinance. The request is to revise condition of approval and to change future land use designation to high residential, eight units per acre. That gives 95 units base density. Zoning request includes total of 187 multifamily rental units that are achieved via Transfer of Development Rights and Workforce Housing Density Bonus Program. Residential density increases appropriate at this location. It is located in urban suburban tier at the intersection of two major roadways. It, the request included purchase of 16 Transfer of Development Rights. Staff is proposing use of all available 36 to meet the policy 2.4b provisions. It furtheres workforce housing program, 47 workforce housing units to be provided on-site rentals. To ensure compatibility with existing residential, staff is proposing conditions to require separation and to limit the height of buildings on the southern portion of the site. Overall, it meets comprehensive plan requirements. So that is a condition limit to 187 units, purchase of 36 TDRs, 25% of all units required to be workforce housing units to build on-site, and structures within southern 350 feet limit to three stories, and no structures within southernmost 150 feet. And we'd like the last condition of approval to have same adoption date for this request and a zoning application. During the public notification process, the Planning Division sent out letters to interested parties and 500-foot notices. It went to Coalition of Boynton West Residential Associations, to seven HURAs. Planning Division hosted a web-based informational meeting on March 29. No member of the public attended. To the date, staff received few phone calls and a letter from Valencia Shores, and I think one member of Publix there in Exhibit Nine. With the staff-proposed conditions, this amendment is consistent with the mandatory TDR program, contributes to the provision of workforce housing, compatible with surrounding land uses, and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommended approval with modification. Planning Commission also recommended approval with modification. It's a motion to transmit. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question. What was the maximum height under the previous designation as a CLR?
There was no condition. The site plans that went in front of the board was 290-bed CLF, and it was three-story buildings.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. No comments yet, so let's go to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first two speakers will be Barbara Roth, on behalf of Cobra, and Jim Knight.
Always good to see you, Ms. Roth.
So nice to see you again. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. And first, a quick thank you all. One week ago today, you honored us with your presence at our installation, first Cobra meeting in over two years, and we were most grateful. Thank you. My ask today with respect is that you postpone this until the next round of transmission. I have been a community advocate in the Villages of Windsor long before my involvement with Cobra. I'm here today representing Cobra, but Cobra advocates for its member communities. Valencia Shores is one of those communities. Cobra did not have an opportunity to assist our member community this time in this process. As far as I know, in my years of involvement, it's the first time this has happened in the Cobra area. The Villages of Windsor, and I live in that area, all the development that you have seen on the corners has gone through the process of meeting with multiple communities, not just the one community adjacent. I live in Bellagio, and we worked for 10 to 11 years on that northwest corner, which is four times the size of the southeast corner. Northwest corner is 40 acres. It is mixed use, and it will also have workforce housing in townhouses and in apartments, apartments which will be a maximum of three stories. That density is a density of 10. The apartments, the townhouses behind the Publix on the northeast side, all of that was done in discussion and negotiations with multiple communities, with Cobra at the table at their side. That was not done in this process. So I humbly request that this has been fast-tracked to get it in under this transmittal. The reason, I believe, is because of the northwest property owner, Ansco, will be putting shovel in the ground very soon on the first of their elements, which will be a three-story apartment complex. And I see that this is competitive on the southeast corner. Of course, the southeast corner is currently approved for a CLF. 290 beds do not equate to this density. And by the way, if you look at the site, the density, we have always talked about that as 10 buildable acres because of that dogleg piece. So, yes, it's looking like 16 density. It's more like 17 or 18. Also, please, if I just might, in negotiations with Valencia Shores, there was an agreement that if they were going to continue to come to you, it would be at three stories for all four buildings. However, when the letter Valencia Shores wrote was not in full-throated support, primarily because Cobra had not had an opportunity to advocate for them, the developer, I will say, in a peek, went back and put up that fourth story on the fourth building. I consider that disingenuous negotiations.
Thank you, Ms. Roth.
Thank you. I humbly request that you postpone this to the next round of transmittal. Thank you.
All right. Following is Mr. Jim Knight here. All right. Following Jim Knight, we will have Mr. Ed Brooks, and then Drew Martin.
I apologize, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. You can deduct me 30 seconds, so just put me at 2:30 there for not being up here.
I'm not in charge of that.
Anyhow, I just wanted to speak. I'm not, by the way, was not the broker on the Roger Fina, and I'm not a broker, any involvement in this piece and so forth. And I just want that to be on the record, because I have lived my entire life here in Palm Beach County, and I do advocate for good development. I'm 57 now. If I lived in this apartment community, and I happened to be on the third floor, and I was a little bit younger, I'd have no problem trekking up there with groceries and whatever else, so forth. But I see in a lot of the apartments now with the change in the market conditions, that a lot of people that can't afford to buy homes are ended up in the apartments. And I personally believe that it makes for a better development, having four stories, because you do have the elevators. And I think that's something, just in general, forget about this project, but just in general, to think about that. to think about that. And I know I've sat on other meetings and so forth where people as well as myself lived in apartments. In college, it's no problem. I went up four floors, five floors for that matter with whatever. But I also had a dining hall to go to and so forth. So I'd appreciate if you consider this project and I think it's a good area for this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Mr. Brooks.
Ed Brooks, I am a director on board at Valencia Shores and excuse my allergies if they get bad here. We're not against developing this site. It has been approved for the congregate living. That's ready to go. But we did have some, we did and still do have some issues with this site. We have met with the developer. They were somewhat amicable meetings, but they never took into consideration any of our recommendations. Just as a reminder, you know where the site is. We do not live in Boca. So the issue we have is sometimes the best decisions are made with what is not said. Yes, the developer pointed out that there's less units. She did not use the word more density. It's really the density that is the issue. It's much, much denser than the surrounding properties on that corner. Yes, they have met with us and they have done presentations. They have not done, to my knowledge, I may be incorrect, any in-person presentations to any of the other surrounding communities. There was the issue of the four-story building. The developer has promised us that even the three-story buildings will have elevators because according to their plan of marketing, it's going to be to an, not an elderly population, but an older population. So they have committed to all of those buildings will have elevators. The four-story was interesting because we tried to fight that because it doesn't even make sense with the plan. We had at the last meeting, they left, they came back, two minutes later said, we'll give up the four-story if we get a letter of support from Valencia Shores. I said, we take, we would take that under advisement, go back to our board. In analyzing that, we were basically giving up all of our rights, particularly that we did not have the opportunity to have the support of Cobra because the developer never brought them into it. We said, well, we can't give up all of our rights. And at the meeting with the four-story, as a builder was leaving, he said, well, that wouldn't really much matter because I would get my density anyway. Not sure what that meant. But anyway, we don't mind this property being developed. We don't like the way it is being presented currently. Right now, he can build tomorrow a congregate living facility. He can put, as Ms. Roth said, he can put a shovel in the ground. I don't think it's fair that the quality of our neighborhood should be collateral damage because the business climate has changed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Following Mr. Drew Martin, we'll have Dagmar Braz and then Doty Glass.
Drew Martin, the CR Club does not have a position on this, so I want to make it very clear, I am not speaking on behalf of the CR Club on this issue. I am, however, we do like to work with Cobra and I like to work with Cobra because I think they play an important role. And so I think it's important that Cobra be in agreement and be happy with what's going on. I mean, I know there's issues with, you know, congestion and traffic. I don't know how this will impact that. But I do think that what Ms. Roth is requesting is very reasonable. And that's just to postpone this and give the commission and the staff time to work with the applicant to meet the requirements so that everyone can be happy in the end. We, on behalf of the CR Club, I will say, we support multifamily housing. We support affordable housing. I wish the county would go to sue the legislature to release Sadowski funds. I was at a charrette Saturday for the downtown Lake Worth area. I argued in favor of apartments. We do need apartments. I'm not going to say everywhere the best place as you go. I am concerned, however, that workforce housing is not really affordable to many people. And I think that we need to look at how we can make housing more affordable because firemen and police officers and sheriffs are pretty well-paid, but they unfortunately are not the average. A lot of people are making less. So we do need affordable housing. The CR Club supports affordable housing, but we want you to make, you know, work with Cobra so that everyone's happy in the end and everyone feels like their voices were heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Dagmar.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to say real quick what an honor it was to have six out of seven county commissioners visit us at Cobra last week. You made us feel very, very special. Thank you for taking the time. The reason I'm talking about this is, when is enough enough? We started out at eight units to the acres. Cobra did support the CLF. It seemed very appropriate for the area since there are a lot of active adult communities in the area. But we jumped from eight units to the acre to fifteen point eight units to the acre. That is substantial, especially in the fact when you look at the dog ear on this piece of property that they are saying is the part of the eleven point eight forty acres, they're not even really going to be able to utilize that property. On the northwest corner, we already approved workforce housing and townhomes and apartments and whatnot, and, which is three hundred and eighty-nine units. And then also around across the street, there's a public shopping center and then surrounding the perimeter, there's a substantial amount of townhomes there as well. So when is enough enough? There are no employment opportunities around here other than to work in the Publix Shopping Center. The fire station that's down the street, I'm sure employs probably eighteen, twenty firemen and paramedics, but that's not really enough. How many people are you going to pull into this intersection for workforce housing when there are no employment opportunities for this parcel? It's just really pretty intense. If you look at all the numbers, if you could get that reduction down, you know, and even I understand the workforce housing and even if it's not the eight units, we're supporting the ten units on the corner, on the other corner. So, you know, let's just not make it that intense where it really affects the quality of life for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braz.
And then our final speaker, Ms. Glass.
Doty Glass, and I live in Palm Beach Shores, a thirty-plus year resident, and I'm here speaking as a resident of Palm Beach County, but I'd like to give you a little bit of background about housing. I was on the planning division staff when we adopted the eighty-nine comp plan. And we talked about the crisis of housing then. And a few years ago, we were back meeting, talking about at a summit, the crisis of housing. I also served as the first manager of the Commission on Affordable Housing when, for the first time, the county put three million dollars, Avalorum, into a trust fund. We created programs, we had policy. And I would tell you, that all changed and then we create a new policy and new things. And now the board is putting Avalorum money in again. We have ship in place and we talk about housing as a crisis. And I have friends, young friends, who struggle. They have what I would consider decent jobs to find a rental apartment. And we all know what the problem is. And we look at what we've done with workforce housing and know that it barely scratches the surface. In nineteen eighty-nine, I'd like to just give you some history. When we adopted that comp plan and the land use map where HR eight became the top density, we took HR twelve, HR eighteen, HR twenty-four off of the land use map because they were on at that time in certain locations in Palm Beach County. We brought everything down because those elements of the comp plan talked about policies to have people utilize TDRs and incentive programs to do affordable and workforce housing as we talk about now. So I want to remind you, density makes people uncomfortable, but where we put it and how it's done is set up through both your comp plan and your zoning code. And you have staff that has reviewed it and said, this is an appropriate, compatible use here. You have a planning commission that has said that as well. And I know it makes people uncomfortable, but if we're ever going to change the dialogue of the crisis for housing for people that live and work here, we need to start supporting those programs that you have in place. And staff reviews them very, very thoroughly. And with regard to the coordination with the neighborhood, a lot of times until you have a site plan, you can't get that thorough conversation. This is the first step. It needs to move forward. The zoning application will make sure that the design elements, and Cobra knows this, Delray Alliance knows this, those are the conversations that work out the height and the detail of the design. You're conditionalizing the land use to put certain parameters in place. Obviously, they've agreed, staff has reviewed this, and your planning commission has agreed it's a good project. I just ask you to think about that in the scheme of things. I know it's a lot on the plate, but I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Perfectly timed. Okay. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And in full candor, I don't, I'm not the district representative or commissioner for this area, but I have been for the last five years. And quite frankly, I've been a lifelong resident, born and raised about two miles east of here on Hypoluxa Road. I live in the same area, about a mile east of here on Hypoluxa Road. And, you know, quite frankly, I'll just be honest with you, I'm very frustrated right You know, while this was being filed and going through the process, I did represent this area. I never, as far as I can recall, had a call or a meeting or my input was sought in any way about this land use change. I'm looking at a map that my, I was, Dan Ackerman White was kind enough to put together. I'm happy to share it with the board. But it's a snapshot of what that is up there on the PowerPoint, but it has the numbers filled in. And so let me just go over what's going on at the northwest corner. There's four hundred units there. To the west on Hypoluxa Road, just down the street, Y Farm, two hundred and eight units with hundreds more units planned, State Road seven and Hypoluxa. Just to the north of there, about quarter mile north in Shearbrook, proposed two hundred eighty-two units, proposed a hundred ninety-four units north of Lantana, west of State Road seven. And now we want to go to hyperdensity under the guise of workforce housing. Well, let me tell you, as a lifetime resident of this area, I'm very supportive of workforce housing. We're also cognizant that what we're doing is not being, has not been very effective. And fortunately, under the leadership of Commissioner Bernard, we're going to have an opportunity to really change the matrix on how we can incentivize and get larger percentages of these developments to be workforce housing. The applicant says, well, we're entitled to do two hundred and seven units. We're entitled to do this. No, you're not. The land use on it does not allow that right now. So the reduction from two oh seven to a hundred and eighty-seven is not that appealing to me. But what really is frustrating to me is I sit up here all the time and compliment Delray Alliance and Cobra and the North Community, the North County Neighborhood Associations and every organization that participates effectively with their elected representatives. And Cobra does an outstanding job. And I'm amplifying their voice today in that it is not acceptable to me as, and I'm just one vote and I understand that, but if we have, if the citizens take the time and effort to establish these organizations and run them professionally, they ought to be the first person. If they're not going to come to me as the elected representative, fine, go to the communities themselves. And they didn't go to Cobra. They said, well, we're going to get the land use and then go to Cobra. Not acceptable to me. All the negotiations that occurred on this parcel and every parcel surrounding this area went through the proper process and procedure. And so they have every right to feel shut out. They have every right to feel left out because they have been. Now, I want this property site to be developed. It's gone through a lot of controversy just in my short time on the county commission, never mind what Valencia Shores and Cobra had to deal with in years past. But this is not an apples-to-apples comparison or exchange, going from a CLR with what was really low density to now to hyperdensity at almost sixteen units per acre. By the way, if I'm ever late to a commission meeting or a lunch that I have with somebody or whatever in life, it's because I'm sitting on Hypoluxa Road waiting to get to I ninety-five. Well, Banning, let's not talk about Banning. If any of us are ever late, it's probably because of Banning. You know, the density here is inappropriate. And there are a thousand units, by my count, going up already. I don't want to rob or deny the property owner, who I think could work a little bit more effectively with Valencia Shores and certainly should open the door to working with Cobra at the outset. I would, they are very fine people and they look to find compromises that fit the community and that process hasn't occurred here. And so, you know, I'm just, it's a frustrating point. We want the workforce housing units. This is no panacea in that regard. I think this merits, and I think this board should slow down. I think it merits some further consideration and dialogue with the community and so that I'll make a motion to postpone at this time.
I have a motion to postpone by Commissioner Kerner. Do I have a second?
I do.
Is that a second by Commissioner Sax?
The district commissioner.
Would the district commissioner like the second? Okay. The district commissioner is going to take the second on that. Commissioner McKinley, would you like to speak before Commissioner Marino?
No, I'll let Commissioner Marino go first. I'll follow her.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. And since it was indicated that six out of seven of the commissioners attended last week, I was the one that did not. And even though I am the North End Representative, it wasn't that I didn't want to be there, but I was representing the county at the Juno Beach Town Council meeting and it was very important. So I congratulate you on your now finally meeting after two years and I put my apologies forward for not being there. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley, did you want to speak?
Yes. And it's, this is one of those situations where you're driving to the Valencia Shores Cobra meeting last week and you're sitting there at the corner of Hypoluxa and Lyons Road at the light and you see the big yellow zoning sign and you realize, oh, I won't say that word on the record, this is now my district. And sitting there in the Valencia Shores clubhouse and realizing that Commissioner Kerner no longer represents that, that is a byproduct of redistricting. And so it is an honor to work with and to meet the community because Commissioner Kerner was more engaged, or actually lack of engagement from what he just testified. I don't have any problem. This is, this is new to me. I'd like a little extra time to work with Valencia Shores and to allow Cobra to review this. I have met with the agents. They're the only ones that I've met with. I have expressed concerns over the height of the buildings and feel that Cobra is definitely and sounds like Valencia Shores is not opposed to doing something on this site. Let's give it a little bit more time for them to go through that process and have an opportunity to review. So I am in support of postponement today.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Our city attorney, our county attorney would like to opine?
Yes, just if you're going to postpone, I would suggest setting forth to when, a date certain for the postponement.
Probably to August, would you think? What's the date in August?
The August hearing is on August thirty-first.
Okay.
Almost four months.
Would you accept that as your, okay.
Yes, I, it sounds enough, that's enough time, a reasonable amount of time for the agent to work with the homeowners association.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. All right, before I recognize Commissioner Kerner again, I'm going to make a comment. You know, I don't think, we keep on talking about fast-tracking, that becomes a dirty word here and we're double-dipping when we're talking about workforce housing. I don't, it's not double-dipping to me. I think we're talking about a, an effort to, again, encourage workforce housing. And the density to me on this particular parcel, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, I'm, I think that this is appropriate for this spot, but again, I think that I'm surprised that Cobra feels shut out of the process. Ms. Morton, I know that you're, this is not the first matter you've brought before this body and normally I think that you would have dotted your i's and crossed your t's on these kind of things. Obviously, Ms. Roth and Ms. Braz were part of the conversation at the planning commission since they are appointees there, but I think that I'm going to support the postponement today because I think that there is ample evidence that the community will embrace a project, but they just would like a little more time to digest this. And I think that you recognize that that's probably the best way to go today rather than what could be the alternative. So with that being said, Commissioner Kerner, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to butt back in, but I wanted to give compliments to the agent and Ms. Morton and her associate or partner. her associate or partner. I did meet with them. I don't want you to think that they didn't meet with me. I think I met with them this week. They all blend together. I don't, I don't know if it was last week or this week. It might have been yesterday. I don't know. But Ms. Morton is a consummate professional, and I've practiced law long enough to know sometimes, and I'm not saying this happened, but sometimes your client directs have the strategy, and I'm not saying that's what happened here. But I don't think that it's a good idea not to consult with Cobra. I think I made that clear. But having said that, and I met with the property owner as well, I think it's Ramsey, but I was not trying to demean you in any way. I think you do an incredible job, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone on the table, which was made by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. That would move it to August 31st. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, 7 to 0. It is postponed to August 31st. Thank you, everybody. That brings us to item 3C1. That's the coastal high-hazard area update.
All right, so we've now concluded with the site-specific amendments. The next three items are county-proposed text amendments. The first item, Maria Bello, with the planning division, will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is essentially an update of the coastal high-hazard area map and definition that is in the county's comprehensive plan. Every local government that has a coastal area is required by the state to have these items in their comprehensive plan, and the state periodically provides new modeling and new updates for those areas. And so we are required to incorporate those, and we are doing so through this amendment. We have a definition in our introduction and administration element, a map in our map series, and we also have policies in our comprehensive plan, which are unique, I think, to Palm Beach County, that actually prevent density increases in the coastal high-hazard area. Not only through amendments, but also through the use of transfer of development rights and workforce housing density bonus. Those policies are not changing through this amendment. This is an inset of the map that is proposed. As you can see, the unincorporated coastal high-hazard area is very, very tiny, not only because of the land form, but also because much of the coastal area is, in fact, within municipal limits. So just to summarize, this updates the definition, updates the map, and updates several references scattered in the comprehensive plan. As usual, we notified others of this amendment through our I-Park process, and no property owner notification was necessary, because no new properties were added that would be considered affected by the coastal high-hazard area. Staff is recommending approval, as did the planning commission, and so the motion would be to transmit.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and move approval to transmit, but I also have to comment on the sea, lake, and overland surges from hurricanes slash model. How long did somebody have to take to come up with the name of the model?
That is something that is not developed by us, so we would need to find out from the state or the federal agencies that are involved.
That's an amazing, amazing amount of time. Anyways, that's my motion.
All right, I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sax. Mr. Martin, you have a card in. Would you like to say a few words?
Can we talk about sloshing?
Yeah, talk about sloshing around.
I'm very concerned about sloshing, if it sloshes into my house. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club, I don't know if we have a specific position, so I'll speak on my own behalf. Obviously, we're concerned about climate change. It's a big, a big issue for us. I'm really concerned about any additional developments on the shoreline, which is when we talk about the coastal high-hazard area, that's what we're talking about. There are some really interesting books out there by engineers that have really discouraged the use of seawalls. They cause erosion of the beach system, and it costs you a lot of money, because you've got to build those beaches back. So in this model, and I'm certainly am not an expert on what's in there in this slosh model, but I hope the slosh model is not encouraging seawell to be built. We should be looking at natural dune systems. I don't think the county has a lot, a lot of land right on the ocean. I think there are a few, a few locations, but I think the building in the future is going to have to be done very carefully, and we should really discourage people from building that close to the water. There's a term called retreat, and what retreat means is that we move back away from extremely dangerous areas. So certainly not against the transmittal, but I hope that these things are being taken into consideration by your staff. Thank you.
As always, we thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin. All right, before I call the vote on this, I'm just going to notify you that we're approaching the noon hour. I'm looking at the cards for the next item 3C2. We have about an hour's worth of comments on that. We're going to break for lunch at noon, and we will come back at 1:00. What's that look for? Can we take a vote? You certainly can call the chair and ask for a vote, if you want to ask for it.
I think it's probably up for discussion. Maybe we could move forward. We have people who have been waiting here a long time, and maybe if we plow through it. I just, my suggestion, you know, I always love lunch, but my suggestion, we could probably move right through these cards and, and pull through by an hour and a half.
All right, so the, Commissioner Sax is challenging the chair's call to have a break, and so, all in favor of taking a break at noon? I got three. I got four. We're going to have lunch. Okay, so we're going to break at noon, and we'll be back at 1:00. Excuse?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a drop-dead time that I have to leave, because I have to pick up my kids, so there are some of those items I will not be able to vote on, since we're going to take an hour lunch.
Would a half-hour lunch help?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do a half-hour lunch, then. Eat fast. All right, let's finish up with what we have in front of us. I have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sax, to transmit the coastal high-hazard area update text amendment. All in favor, all opposed? We have passed at 7 to 0. We are in recess until 12:30.